Thank you very much, and a big surprise. We're gonna have a presentation from the Academy of Environmental Science in a little bit, but I asked Mr. Leonard if he might be willing to bring some students because the Academy of Environmental Science, when we get the presentation, we often get, you know, kind of the details of stuff, but we wanted to see the faces of what's out there. And to say there's some cool things going on at the Academy of Environmental Science is such an understatement. I am blessed because I've got, I think, I was saying to Mr. Mullen, I think I have at least four and maybe more either current or former swimmers, and anyone who still wants to, that are a part of the academy. And so I get, and I even have one of our parents who is one of your staff members now, and every day you would think they're coming back from collecting candy or something because they just are beaming with what's going on. So, Mr. Leonard, I'm gonna turn it over to you, but this is just our opening is to share with the kids about AES.
Awesome. Thank you so much for, you know, allowing us to present. Guys, why don't you come on up? What I had, what you guys here today are our academic team, Ocean Bowl and Envirothon, is members of our A Team and B Team. We have such an interest in being a part of our academic team that we have multiple teams. So you guys come on up here. These students are from all base schools, and they partake, partook in Ocean Bowl last year. The A Team, which is in the tan shirts, placed 12th in the nation in the National Ocean Science Bowl, and that was actually also against China as well as Canada, some other international schools that came out as well. This year, they are representing Florida in the Florida Envirothon, and they will go down to Boynton Beach in a couple of weeks to try to win the state title again. We've won the state title once in three years for Envirothon, and we've won the state title in Ocean Bowl twice in four years. Last year, we took first and second place. This year, we took second place overall. So incredibly proud of these young men and women who have dedicated countless hours to study about our environment and about the oceans. And also our coach, Mr. Ward Cooper, who, this is his swan song, he'll be retiring at the end of the year after many years serving our district, and he is the mastermind behind these brilliant endeavors.
And I have to ask, I asked this earlier, but the rest of the board probably didn't get a chance, okay, how many sophomores are here? And so anybody got certified in diving? So, okay, when I was in school, I just tried to avoid PE because I didn't want to play dodgeball, or be the subject of the dodgeball. But you guys get to do something really cool, and I think, is somebody who would want to share, but I know there's been articles, but come on, first can experience, you know, conversations. Tell us about it.
Well, it's like a different world. You're under the water, and you see what's there. You're with them. It's different from like, you put on a mask, you know, 30 years swimming around, but when you're under the water, it's in the water, it's a completely different world to everything.
And, okay, so the physicalness, though, of doing it, do you, I mean, is there, does it take, you know, on your body in a good way? I mean, do you have to, it gives you a workout almost?
Yes.
Well, the water is usually cold.
So your heart is pounding?
Well, so you all need wet suits, right?
Yes.
Dana, did you go to, where did you, did you check out at Manatee Springs as well?
Yes.
Then he was part of your group?
Yeah.
So our first group that we were, like, really learning this process ended up with a checkout dive at Manatee Springs, and there's a current there, if you have to swim in the bowl. And so there's a large log at the bottom of the bowl, and then they had to hold on to to practice their skills. But they had to demonstrate their skills in that checkout dive to ensure that they were ready to be sewer certified. So it wasn't just like swimming out there. They're down there taking their mask off, taking their PC off, and putting it to the side, and then having to hold still while the current pushing them, and put it back on. So these guys are, you know, at least one step closer to Navy SEALs.
And I will tell you, our school's a graduated kids that are in SEAL program. You can't tell you where they are. We graduated kids that have been very, very successful in their career.
Isn't it so nice for people to ask a board of stewardess, what do you do and why, without looking about for, like, they're scuba diving, certainly learning about fish?
Yep.
You should be doing that. You're in Florida, and that's great.
Absolutely. Especially here, you know, so much of our economy is made up by the major coast and Indian Ocean system. To be able to get out there and experience and have these kids really ignite a passion for it is a blessing for me.
And Mr. Leonard, thank you, because I know you became principal out there, and it was like, okay, so PE, we should be creative. We're an environmental academy, and you went after going, you know, after PE and diving, then had to have a staff and get by in from the staff thinking, oh my gosh, you must be crazy. We're gonna do what? I always did, but in a good way. And for those who don't know, you know, Mr. Leonard, you did, you teach, you taught at Renaissance?
Yeah.
You know, we've had conversations about what Renaissance kind of teachers come out of Renaissance, and what kind of learning happens there. And Mr. Leonard came out of Renaissance, was at Citrus Springs Middle, and of course is at La Canto, and then also is now the principal there, so we're excited about it. So, any questions? Yes, you are in.
So didn't you qualify for State Science Fair, or even Science Fair this year? I know AES, that's a big industry.
Well, I did, by category, but we had, like, what actually disqualified for, and then a backup, which was my boss, which was also on the A Team. The other one that I actually helped with is, it's actually on the whole way.
And you probably remember Nicole from when she was in middle school, she was a big writer for the paper. The survey focuses on 3D printing, affordable animatronic appendages for people that are amputees and whatnot. And so, yeah, so we had Nicole. I'll bring that, I want to talk about Science Fair when I come the next time, because I think that the culture has grown, and I'm excited about that.
Why Justice on Science Fair, it's awesome.
We appreciate it. If you mind leading us on the pledge, we appreciate it. Everybody would please rock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Next, our agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Bryan, certified by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt the agenda as recommended by Mr. Pennsylvania. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes by zero. Approve of the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, and a second by Mr. Dyer to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes by zero. And recognition of donations.
Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Florida State Junior Festlands. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Douglas and Laura Dodd for the Luke Simmons Scholarship Fund. Approve the donation of the AC heating equipment value at $2,585 to Whitley-Cootie Technical College from Johnstone's Applied Ocala. Approve the $600 scholarship donation to Whitley-Cootie Technical College from Joseph F. Bennett Senior Trust. Approve the $1,500 donation to Whitley-Cootie Technical College from Citrus, citrus Mopar's car building in Berlin. The total, $5,685.
Any given, we always take this, a couple moments after we agree the donations to the community, but wouldn't be able to put some programs on, especially ones as expensive as, if you're without the help of this community and school, you truly appreciate it. Citizens comments? The first citizen's comment is reserved for comments on items requesting approval on the agenda. Another opportunity is gonna be available at 5:15 PM and at the end of business. Any citizens' comments regarding the agenda? I guess not. I guess you could, I guess you could hear me anyway, though. Any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will move on to the presentation. Mr. Leonard?
All right. Well, thank you again for having us come out again, you know, it's our annual, it's our annual presentation to kind of give you guys a heads up on what we're doing and what we've been up to. One thing I want to point out as we start is, and I've had the honor of speaking with Ms. Himmel, President, at the last couple of events that we've done at AES, and I just want to again reiterate the fact that the partnership that we have between Citrus County Schools and the Academy of Environmental Science is honestly, in my opinion, the benchmark for what charter school and district-school district relationship should be across the state. It is clearly the best relationship of any other charter slash school district organization partnership in the state. Having talked to other people that run charter schools and other people that work in school districts, it's very contentious across the state, across the country, but the fact that we can consistently come together, that we can work together, and that we can plan for what is best for our children, and I think that's what I always hear, want to hear, whether it's Mr. Mullen, Ms. Himmel, or the executive staff, or the board, it's that we do what we need to do to improve the lives of our children, and that is also at AES and our public schools. So thank you all for that. If you'll take a look at the presentation I put there, or the paper I put in front of you, you'll notice a lot of things that we've put together over the last year. I do want to show you about a one-minute video, so I do, I want to be respectful of the time, just to kind of give you a picture of what life at AES is like. The audio's not working, so you'll have to watch it without the audio, but I can, like last year, I can get it to you in the case that you'd like to hear what the kids are saying and whatnot. So let me go ahead and play that.
Mrs. Douglas is here, and she's really good following her video without audio.
Currents, the ocean currents, he goes on kayaks, and then he'll demonstrate that and show us like firsthand what's going on.
Academy is great for so many reasons, like we take good trips, we always get out in the environment, the teachers here are amazing, they support you if you are struggling, they're here for support.
Sure they are.
Since AES offers is a school program, and it's one of the only schools that does offer a school program.
So, you know, I just wanted to kind of clip some things together so you guys can see it and not spend a ton of time. You know, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the partnership on a micro level with Marine Science Station and Mr. Ernie Olson, the supervisor of Marine Science. He and I are as thick as thieves, and, you know, we work really well together, we love spending time with each other, and a lot of the things that we've been able to accomplish are because of him inspiring me and helping me get to that, the strength really, to make the risky decisions, so to say. One of the really big things I want to point out is the number of applications this year. We've seen a steady increase in applications over the last three years since I've been with the Academy of Environmental Science, and this last year, our applications were over 320. So we have 70 open spots for the school and 320 applicants. And so that just speaks to the staff, it speaks to the students, it speaks to the board of directors that we have, it speaks to the partnership. And I also wanted to, you know, kind of extend an apology on behalf of Michelle Leeper, she had a family emergency, she wasn't able to be here today, but we do have Greg Nixon, he is one of our board members, and he's here, you know, representing for us today. Financially speaking, we're in a much more solid position than we were when I got there. I'll never forget, the first or second day I got, I was there, Mr. Blocker called me, and he said, "Mr. Leonard, what are you doing?" I'm like, "I don't understand, what do you mean?" He said, "Well, you're spending money way too much." I looked at, I was like, "I don't know, I don't know anything about it," and I learned with his help. Yeah, absolutely, and I learned with his help that we were in the red to finish the year, and from him and Tammy to where we are now, Tammy has helped us get through a successful audit the last three years, and with her help, she's helped us get to a point where we are clearly in the black and operating at a healthy fund balance. So, again, we would not be able to do that without you guys and without the partnership. So I want to open up for any questions. I also want to mention, too, that our guardian, Mr. Williams, has been there this year, and he's been phenomenal, what a great addition to our staff, and he adds a presence for the community to come see, and it's been a wonderful experience having there. So any questions you may have?
Go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
All right. Well, thank you all for coming, and the students for being here, and giving us the I just had a question in regard to the facility there in City Crystal River, and where that lease stands, and what's going on in the facility. I know there's been some on-range planning, and there had been some discussion about what happens next, but can you just brief a little bit about what's going on there?
Absolutely. So we, we solidified a five-year lease with the city at a dollar a year. We were able to bring that down from the $23,000 down to a dollar a year with the city. And with the caveat that we would maintain the maintenance of the facilities. Now, large projects is open for debate, and one of the things we're looking at is transitioning from the sewer to a septic system. One of the big barriers is bringing the water across the bridge, because it stops at the bridge. And so we are in the midst of processing through that. However, you know, we have a good relationship with the city, and we both are working to keep the school fresh and keep it at a good, a good spot facility-wise. Does that answer your question?
You've got a five-year lease, basically.
Exactly, yeah. So we did, and we're in year one of it right now.
I was, I did know that there was that reduction in agreement for the dollar, which was a great way for the city. You can show their support of AES.
Absolutely. And, you know, an interesting piece of that is that the original grant that was used to purchase the property is under College, Florid Legion Trust, and it was, the reason the school brought the county into, or not the county, the city, was because we needed a municipality to receive that funding. So we built the Gary Madoff Park, which is about 1,000 feet beyond the school, that provides public access, and that $23,000 that we were paying, that was to pay off that facility. So once that was paid off, then we were able to bring it down to a dollar. But again, yes, absolutely, we're very thankful that City Crystal River was willing to do that, because ultimately, they didn't have to. And that's kind of the, that's the interesting thing, is it's evolved, is the intertwinedness of AES and the city, and how can we continue to grow and expand as a, as a program, not a number of students, but a number of activities and programs.
Now, you know that you might bring the county in, because I know you're leasing from the city, but there's a lot of county development beyond you, and they very successfully just brought sewer and water across the river, even the Hall River Bridge, so it's been done, there's a good comp for, you know, cost estimates, and just bring the county in, and maybe you can get that thing right. Your bridge is a little bit longer than Hall River Bridge.
Yeah.
It should give you a good idea of how much it would cost, and then you could get the county to join in.
Awesome, awesome, thank you for that. We'll definitely, you know, explore that.
Yeah, I'm sure they'd want to pull those guys that are beyond you.
Right, yes, yes, and ultimately connect it to the beach, you know, so you have to keep pumping that out.
So one of the questions I've had, and I reached out to you, because I, the budget concerns me, not your budget, state budget and funding, and in particular, the challenge is, is you have some new teachers, and you have a smaller, you know, community there to draw from. So we think in our community, in our size district, teacher salaries can really have an impact on us when we're small, but it's even tougher, or could be, on a small school like yours, where if half of your teachers were under, let's say, the state's, if they set a floor on us.
Right.
Has that been something you've looked at?
Yeah.
Because that's a, that could be a challenge, and one we want to make sure, obviously, that you're successful in doing, but I just didn't know if that's been something you've looked at.
Absolutely, and, you know, honestly, it's leaning on the staff of Citrus County, you know, it's leaning on Dr. Heber, and Mr. Mullen, and Mr. Bishop, and Ms. Wilson, to talk about, well, what are they, what is, what is Citrus County doing? Because it's, we're a microcosm of them. I mean, I think it's a very similar percentage of the amount of money in the general fund that Citrus County Schools spends on salaries is what we spend. It's probably very similar, that percentage, right? A large chunk, you know, 80% of our general fund is spent on salaries, and so that's something that we're aware of, and I wouldn't sit here and pretend to say that I'm an expert in it. That's why I love the partnership that we have, because no other district can I sit down and call someone on the staff and say, "Hey, I need some help, I'm the charter school, can you help me walk me through this path?" Every other district say, "Kid rocks, buddy, you need to figure it out," because that's one less school that we have to compete with. So we're, again, and I'm not dodging the question, I'm just saying, I'm gonna depend on the people that know what they're doing and, you know, trust them, because they've gotten us here.
And I really bring it up, not because I think you'll, I think we would find a way to work through it.
Absolutely.
But I do think it's one that sometimes the state may not have looked at, is to say, public charters could be underfunded.
Listen.
As a result of that, with regards to teacher salary, it could be very impacting to them if all of a sudden, half of their staff, they've got to bring up, and in our case, we may be less than that.
It'll be a very interesting story to see in the next few months, as legislation continues to move through and eventually get passed, how that impacts public charters across the state. The good news is, is that we are in a very stable place and a very stable district that, you know, works together, so it'll be us looking from the outside in instead of the reverse.
And the other one is, you mentioned the partnership and working. I believe you're part of the NISSL as well.
Yeah.
And I thought that was great, because that's, again, something, Mr. Mullen has been, has co-worked with it, and, you know, NISSL, for those of you don't, you know, remember, it's a, it's a great opportunity for our leaders and future and emerging leaders, and our current and emerging leaders, and I was glad to see that you were included as part of that.
Absolutely, and I was incredibly blessed by Mr. Mullen and Ms. Waythel to allow me to be a part of that, and then also by the board of directors to help, you know, cover some of the funding for that, to make that happen. And it's been, it's been a wealth of information for me as a school leader, as well as a, you know, as a husband and a father, you know, setting systems and strategic, being strategic in my planning and things like that. So thank you for that opportunity. All right?
You know, I just want to point out, too, the program, it's terrific, leave that to, talk to the authorities, but, you know, what a great program that is. I think Mr. Connor up, and some of the, we're a part of that, right?
Yep.
Just to be able to offer that, we hope that, that, I mean, the board probably sees the benefit of that program. But with that, is there any plan for summer? I know we have Coastal Camp, it is Coastal Camp. What is the AES involvement in those summer programs to work with students?
Well, I mean, that would be an interesting question that I would, you know, definitely want to, you know, talk to the executive staff and Citrus County staff about how that would integrate, because there's a lot of, there's a lot in the weeds of that. Our students apply and go through the process just like every other Citrus County, well, every Citrus County and surrounding county student that can apply to Coastal Camp Citrus, because as Mr. Olson has showed with me, that that's open to other county students as well. And so it works through a lottery, so students are able to get, be a part of that. Our teachers are able to apply for the supplemental positions, just like any other, because they're Citrus County employees, so we are in the process of trying to develop a summer camp for upper elementary students, something of a day camp, it probably won't be this summer, but that's something that we would like to do in the future, to provide students with an opportunity to get on the water and to learn about the environment, and really build upon the things that Mr. Olson and Mr. O'Leary have built at, that curriculum that they have built there, those fourth-grade standards that are so important to the fifth grade F cad science, and really, you build upon what the foundation they laid. So, thank you so much, guys. Again, it is a, it is a blessing and honor to serve under your leadership and under your vision, and here's to another great year.
You're here.
Next on the agenda is school support services?
Break a little bit, by the way. Thank you, sorry.
Good afternoon. I ask the board to approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the golden rod.
I have a motion by Mrs. Bryan, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the personnel and support information on the golden rod. All in favor? opposed? Passes by zero.
Thank you. I ask the board to approval for Janet Tugwell to be named principal of Christopher High School with an effective date of March 31st, 2020.
Move approval?
Second. I have, I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by, I take this for our partners, to approve Mrs. Tugwell as the new principal at Christopher High School for the new year 2020, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes by zero. Congratulations, Janet Tugwell.
Do you want to say something?
She has her speech already, it's.
It starts with an R.
I wasn't prepared, but thank you so much. I'm over the moon excited. I walked on campus about a week and a half ago and asked Dr. Connor's permission to come back aboard, so I'm very excited to be a pirate again, and look forward to reacquainting with the staff and the students, and just, just seeing what the wonderful things that are happening at Christopher High School, and just keep all those wonderful things moving, so thank you for your support.
And thank you, because you were, you were one of my last assistant principals at Christopher High School, and you've done a fantastic job, so we're looking forward to a good year at that school.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tugwell.
Moving on. Mr. Mullen, finance on the.
What do you call that?
Is that good next to it?
Thank you, Lance, also for fixing our clock. People, none of us could accomplish.
That reminded me when we had to change time in the classroom with all the short guys, and say, "Let me change the clock," and I said, "No, we'll wait for the tall guy to get here."
And, you know, and of course, Mr. Fletcher has a connection to AES as well, because his wife is the amazing Don Fletcher, who's out there, and so we appreciate all she does.
Good afternoon. If you recall, Lance and I came before you fairly recently, and talked to you a little bit about the possibility of us exploring other options for our internet and our WAN. And so we actually did conduct the RFP process. We had six companies submit their proposals for consideration, and after the evaluation, the intent to award has been given to a company named Zayo. And so contention upon board approval and approval of the E-RAY, we would like to proceed with moving forward with Zayo as our internet and our wide-area network provider. Lance is going to present some information, because I'm sure that you're a little bit curious about the company. We currently use Spectrum, and so since this is a new company to our area, we figured you would like to hear a little bit more about that. So Lance?
So, we chose, after going through the RFP, we, we like the least dark fiber option solution for, it was, seemed to be the most cost-effective, and we will gain a lot more performance and reliability with this solution. If you see on your screen, the top one in gray is what we currently have, very similar to this, where if you notice on the right, the Technology Resource Center, it has to go through all these hubs and switches to get to the end of school site. So say Christopher High was on the, on the left, each one of those hubs or switches that has to go through is another process that has to happen. With that comes time. Any one of those fail, there's issues, and those are usually the calls that we have to put in where we've been struggling with support over the last couple of years with Spectrum. On the bottom would be what we would be moving to. So the Technology Resource Center would have a direct fiber connection to the school. There's nothing in between us and the school, it's a straight connection, almost like we're in the same building, from school to building to building.
So it's something that's wrong, you don't have to go to all those places at the top and just directly know what's up?
Correct. And with this solution, we take all the, you know, we don't have to call anybody, it's on us. So if there's a slowness issue, we're gonna know it's something with our equipment. We're just on our own set of DLAN, but this is totally dedicated to us. So it's much more secure.
And with each of the, the current system that we have, the switches, do they not also go through a type of computer system as well? And what I mean by that is, is that not, not just the lag, but you also have the security features that are basically slowing the system down because you have to account for the security at each of those, I want to say node?
Yeah.
As opposed to now you're, you're directly, you're only dealing with their end and our end?
Correct. I mean, we are in our own DLAN on that network, so that is secure, but we take all their switches and their equipment at our location out of the equation. It's pretty much they're bringing the fiber into our building and just handing it off to us.
And if I recall, especially when Spectrum took over, the hub and all of the aggregates around it were where we were all of a sudden having trouble with, was it not?
Yes. I had to, back and forth communication with Spectrum. Basically, I was saying there was an issue with one of their hubs and they're saying everything was fine. We don't see any issues. I ended up having to route traffic from the Technology Resource Center through Christopher Middle and then over to Christopher High for it to work correctly. Once I kind of showed them the data and the proof, then they, they were dug, they dug in more and then eventually found the problem.
And that included like an address. You could, at times, some addresses could go through a certain hub and you might have other addresses, I mean, different, different times where you had issues.
Yeah, these hubs are all over the county.
Where in this case, again, if it's working on one end, it should be working on the other end.
Correct. Yep. And if there is an issue, it's, it's definitely on us. So we are taking that responsibility with this solution. So, you know, we have to look at ourselves as something that is not working correctly.
I live with Spectrum. With Spectrum, I know if something goes down here with the school system, I know when I get home, my computer's going to be down at home too. If it's down at home, if I see that, then I know when I get here. I don't know what the connection is there, but there definitely is a connection.
Yeah, I mean, if you live nearby, you're probably on the same hub as the school.
I must, that's how it goes. I'm not. I'm not here. Rub it in. I got really excited when I, when I was hearing about those at Zayo. I thought, can you ever go to houses too, you know? How is it all, oh, we won't go. So we won't, we won't be part of the community service and just.
No, yeah, this is strictly for the school system. Correct.
So, you know, we look at the cost, I mean, we're talking, you know, over 2.4 million total cost after we added the, the annual fees, but this is E-Rate dependent.
Yes.
So it reduces the costs to the district significantly.
Yes.
Thirty-five thousand, another fifty thousand, so under 300,000, but we're going to pay that off in over four years. So I want to have the assurance on the E-Rate funding that it's approved, it's approved for all four years.
Correct.
If it gets approval, it's not approval for one year, we got to get back for another year, we got to get back for another year. It's approved for all four years.
True. I'm not sure about the E-Rate funding.
For the special construction camps. I have a, I have a slide that kind of breaks it all up.
I mean, I mean, your assurance to the board is that it's, it's not going to be a cost that we're going to be stuck with later if we only get one year, I mean.
So the way E-Rate works is we have to apply for everything every year. So when we have our internet and our WAN currently reimbursed, we apply for that every year. So the construction cost, we would not enter into this unless we received approval for the construction, construction cost because that would be upfront. And then we would also receive approval for the WAN and the internet payments that we have to make monthly payments on those ongoing and that we always have to continue to apply for E-Rate funding on that. And that is, there's no guarantee that they're going to continue to provide that, but we're in that situation right now even with Spectrum, there's no guarantee that they will continue to provide us E-Rate funding for our internet and WAN. So the, the bid cost, the construction cost, we would know that before going into, into this, that they would pay that 90% year one. Right? Well, so they would pay their 90% in the beginning and then we would pay our, our 10% would be, Zayo would allow us to pay it over four payments, four yearly payments.
So the 2.35 million dollars, or let's see, I'm sorry, the 2.115 million, $2,150,000 will be paid upfront after, if E-Rate approves it, right? We're going to get that payment in.
Right.
So, and of course, if E-Rate doesn't approve it, obviously we don't have a contract.
Correct.
Because it's written in the contract.
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, it is a significant savings to the district and, you know, I'm, I appreciate the fact that you guys have done your homework on that and, and looked at this as an opportunity now and Mr. Mullin, you know, had advised that time is of the essence because you need to get this in before the end of the month.
Right.
Right? But I just want to make sure, you don't feel rushed here? I mean, you feel like you've done your due diligence, you've done the homework on this company and on this product, on this fiber network? I mean, you, you don't feel like we're jumping into something here, right?
So Lance is going to have a slide where he showcases the company, the school districts we reached out and spoke with and we are not the only school district in Florida considering moving to Zayo, so that helped make us feel better as well. And when, and he'll speak more to this, but Brevard County is also moving with, they did an RFP and Zayo won their intent to award. And when he, the gentleman that Lance spoke with did the same thing that we've been doing, reaching out to other school districts that are currently using Zayo to find out, you know, what their perspective was. And he said that everything he heard from the companies, the school districts using them was positive and supported exactly the same findings that Lance and I have had. But he'll speak to that a little bit more. He's going to discuss the pricing with you and then also make sure that he discusses what we've found in our reference checks.
Okay, so the next slide shows Zayo's currently in our district right now. That's one of the reasons why our, our special construction cost was as low, I know that is as low as it is, but it is extremely expensive, but compared to the other bids, they are significantly less expensive. The blue is their current bill, what they're currently in the county putting in. The orange would be what we would be adding. I know it shows AES, that long one out to the left, those would be handled by a third party. That by having the third party handle that extension, that saves us quite a bit of money in special construction costs. So they would, Zayo handles all that, or Zayo, sorry. They handle all that in the contract, so we wouldn't have to apply for anything extra with E-Rate for, for those two locations. It's all approved.
But it says owned Zayo Fiber, owned by whom?
Well, Zayo owns all the fiber. We lease it from them. It's a lease, that's for it to be E-Ratable, we have to, we have to lease it from them.
So they already have fiber in or this is for us?
Yeah, down the main roads and so you'll notice all the blue, that's the, pretty much the main roads that they're, they're, they came down through the county already.
And who uses?
Yeah. I can, he's, Josh Nelson from Zayo is here. I would probably defer that.
We all have bad internet at home and so we're all trying to improve that, so that's really what's. We're, we're going to be very transparent about that. Our schools are a priority and second to that, our homes are.
And cell phone coverage.
Yes.
Well, so that is a nice segue into answering the question. You're okay to set up?
Please state your name.
Josh Nelson, Zayo Group. So I'm, I'm the business development manager for the state of Florida and we are in the process of building out central Florida and expansion of our national footprint. We didn't have much of a presence in Florida. We didn't have any presence in, in central Florida specifically, but the driver in building out this 250 million dollars of the build across the entire state is, is one of the wireless companies. So we are targeting all of the towers in the area. So the reason for the build piece that you see in green is, is a build connecting tower to tower to tower throughout the region.
Will that be part of the 5G system?
Yeah. Yep, so it's, it's.
Thank you.
So directly to your house, no, but hopefully the cell phone.
That'll work.
This could be a really weird question. On Highway 19, you stopped just north of the Ozella Road and you didn't go all the way up to 44 West. Is that a future plan? That's a, that's a major artery.
I would say it's, this is definitely the starting point for, for our build that anchor customer owners, the wireless company, but absolutely I can see.
Their, their long range plan is to tear up that area too. But you know, you've been through home assassinate now, that project's already been approved, so they're going to start digging there. Might be a good time to put that in.
Maybe so. What, what you don't see is at the end of every one of these lines is a, is a tower, right? So the, the reason for a build and the routing that we took was, was to connect those and you'll, you'll see that, we call it a light old, that light old segment that comes from moderation and stops, it stops because of the tower.
And there may be a slide on this, but the new builds, what's the status on when they'll be complete?
So the, the new build piece of?
Yeah, I guess my question really is, I'm assuming the new builds impact being able to, to, to read, you know, to merge, to trans, to transition to this. So I'm wondering, you know, tomorrow, next week, next month, are we going to be able to?
We, we wish it could be next.
Yeah, and that's why I'm, I'm trying to get that out.
Our, our wireless customer wishes as well. But no, this, this is a, a project that is well underway. It was an 18-month build commit to our anchor customer and we, we've got right at 40 crews working at this, as Lance mentioned earlier, all over the country. And the, these crews are placing 25, 30 miles of this per week. So it is, it's a feverish pace.
Are you allowed to tell us who your anchor customer is?
Well, there's four wireless companies and I'll call, let's guess, four times if you like, but after this microphone turns off.
CDMA or?
So.
Yeah, we've had trouble with phones.
There you go. A bit of a long way to answer. I wanted you to add the backstory there. The, the, the bill is, is expected to complete first quarter, second quarter of 2021. So it, it will spill over into next year, but this build segment, these build segments rather, in, in green align perfectly with the additional bill required. This is not like we have to circle back to do this. We'll be able to do it all at one time.
A question about the wireless. Anytime you call, say the other district service center, someone's calling you, you're calling back, there's one number that'll go to the general number. You do not know who calls you ever because you don't have an extension that comes through. Will, will you be able to do that, to put an extension to every call that comes in? Because you waste a lot of time trying to find out who calls you.
Yeah, he's not a part of our phone system. He, this is just for the internet and WAN, the wide area network.
Well, I'm talking about to the schools, to, when you call the schools, if you call the main number, so, so you call me and I call back to the school, but I don't know who called.
Oh, it just shows you the school calls.
Just says the school call. Will there be any way to make that better because so much time is wasted trying to track down who called?
Trying to figure it out, yeah.
Got you. I can check the Vertex, they're, they're a company that, that handles our, our phone system. I think it just shows the call ID from the school. I'm not sure if external, when it leaves our network, it, it's going to lose that detail, you know, that, that granular detail of who's calling.
It's supposed to leave a message on your answering machine. Tell us if they don't.
They don't. I guess you don't have 10 minutes.
And just so I understand, so I, I see all the new build areas. So will Zayo, when you lay fiber in our new build areas, you're going to lay fiber that's going to help other companies as well? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. How does that, to, explain to me how that works if we're owning this fiber? Are there different fibers that are, you know, you're just laying a whole bunch of fiber network or fiber cables that, how many fiber, how many fiber cables do you bury?
That's, that's a very good question. The, the cross section of the fiber cable itself, I mean, the, the, the light that, it goes down the glass, that, that glass is the size of one of your hairs. So for each one of the schools, there's two fibers dedicated. The, the cable has multiple, we call it pairs of fiber, one for transmitting, one for receiving, right? A, a relatively small in the scheme of things fiber in, in this day and age just because of the, the increase in bandwidth need and what have you, 144 fibers would be in a cable at, at a minimum, probably maybe even 288 fibers, it's multiples of 12. But anywhere in, in green, especially what we call our backbone, the main path passing through, and then we have the light old going out to the towers. Those, those extensions to the schools, those extensions to the towers could be, you know, 48 count or better, but that, that would be a, a minimum fiber count.
I think, that brings up a good question or, or I think good information for us. If I recall though, every one of those customers that ultimately could hook up to this long term, do they not contribute to the E-Rate tax which then we benefit from? I, I mean, I thought that was also some of what happens with E-Rate is that, that as they, as there is more availability of fiber in an area that people get into, part of the way we get funded through E-Rate is through, through that tax that's created.
Yeah, the, the, where they get the funding for E-Rate is there's a, I believe it's under wireless bill. There's, there's a line item for.
So, I mean, we kind of contribute to ourselves by, I'm saying, by, by having this there, the more consumers that use it, the more taxes they pay on that that we benefit from and we don't have to take property taxes to account for, which is it.
So how does year five look?
Um, here, let me move down to, so that's what our pricing looks like. So internet services included with our, our monthly reoccurring bill. So we would pay $400 per location, 27 locations. We would pay $129,600 out of pocket for all the locations. So after E-Rate, we pay $25,920 a year for 40 gigs to the internet and internally it's unlimited. Whatever equipment we have in the school, whether we have 10 gig modules, 40 gig modules, 100 gig modules, that's the bandwidth we would have. So we would be much faster and also Zayo is a tier one internet provider. So currently right now, if a student were to sit down at their computer and go to Google, he's going to hit six of Spectrum's hubs before he actually gets to the internet. Whereas Zayo, they're going to hit two, one at our site, one in Tampa, and then we're off to the internet. So that's spread over how many students we have. We're going to be much, much faster, much more bandwidth and so think the large, large road with, you know, few, fewer tollies, this, this will slow us down.
I'm sorry, Lance, we had a little private joke going on here. It had nothing to do with what you were saying. I'm sorry, Lance. Are there any equipments that we have to purchase?
No, this is, no, it's, it's straight, they just, they come into our network closet basically and they just hand the fiber off to us and we come, we connect to them and plug right into our switch. So there's no equipment, other than they do provide a switch for, for the internet.
Any other questions?
And this is our, what we are currently paying in our, our bandwidth to each of those locations. So we currently are paying for, for total cost for internet and bandwidth at much lower speeds, we're paying 300. We're going to be much, much faster, much more bandwidth and so think the large, large road with, you know, few, fewer tollies, this, this will slow us down.
I'm sorry Lance, we had a little private joke going on here, had nothing to do with what you were saying. I'm sorry Lance. Are there any equipments that we have to purchase?
No, this is, no, it's, it's straight, they just, they come into our network closet basically and they just hand the fiber off to us and we come, we connect to them and plug right into our switch. So there's no equipment, other than they do provide a switch for, for the internet.
Any other questions?
And this is our, what we are currently paying in our, our bandwidth to each of those locations. So we currently are paying for, for total cost for internet and bandwidth at much lower speeds, we're paying $382,320 a year. After E-Rate, we're spending $76,464.
Our teachers appreciate you saving money.
And again, the, the proposed yearly cost is going to be what, 50, how much was that going to be, 50, the previous?
Oh, for the, yes, it's 58,750.
For the construction, the construction cost, but after the four years, it'll be 25,000?
Correct.
The 12 elementary schools, Crest?
Yeah, that would be all 20, Crest is one of the schools, yes.
No, the next, the next line had, had 12 schools, yeah.
Oh, yes, Crest, yeah, Crest is one of the, one of the, yes, sorry.
There's another question still. Please, who would love to have a motion?
I move.
Do you want us to go through the, sorry?
No, go ahead.
So one of the, the key factors is us being funded by E-Rate. So one of the things that really triggered was, Zayo has had 100% success rate with special construction, they haven't been denied. And they've been awarded over $205 million in E-Rate special construction since 2017. And these are the references I've had a chance to check over the past week. I've sent out many more than this, but these are the ones that actually called me back or emailed back and we had conversations with them. Very little problems, if any, that they had. They're very extremely happy with their customer service and very few issues. Rivar County, I talked to the him directly, we had a great conversation. I was actually on the way over here when I was talking to him. And they're in the same situation we are, basically the same area, same process. And they, they're extremely happy with the company. They did the same things with Ms. Androwski, you already talked about, they called people, same thing, and they've had the same exact results that I have.
So this is a positive in everybody we spoke with. We asked, when you have had any kind of a concern, how long did it take to receive a resolution? For example, when fiber is cut, you know, that, that takes down internet connectivity and WAN connectivity out of sight. And so we asked about that and the turnaround time in each case was, was quick. In fact, one school district, I believe in Texas, they had said a, a fiber had been cut and they were back up and running within two and a half to three hours. And that included the 60-mile drive the tech had to make because they had to come from Dallas. Now, why that's important to us, and probably me and Ms. Powers, is, well, because we recently spoke about La Canto High, and if you recall, La Canto High lost their phone on, service on a Thursday. And it was not until Tuesday before they had the fiber repaired. And so in that situation, the vendor that we were using for the, for La Canto High for the phone line is not who we use for our internet and WAN. But we could have been in that same situation without connectivity for the entire school to the internet and WAN, which just makes my heart go really, really fast. So the fact that everyone we spoke with felt that they had very quick turnaround time for, for repair of fiber cuts, which is really what we're looking at, that's what, since it's buried, that's what it would be if, if it went down. It would be either on our end and if you recall, in November, December, when we were having some internet issues, I, I believe we spoke to you about the situation where we spent several days where our vendor was arguing with us about what was going on and they were denying that it was on their end. And even though, and I finally said, I said, you have got to listen to Lance, he's trying to tell you. And then finally, after three days of arguing with them, Lance was right. And so we would take that out of the equation. We would know if it's on our end or if it's on their end with a fiber cut. And so that would help to, to resolve the issue faster as well.
And we'd like to hear about the success that you all had at E-Rate because we're a little touchy in that area.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Yes. Do you have any more questions for Josh?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2020 slash 59 dedicated wire WAN request for proposal. Is that correct? Is that, did I say this, did I say?
RFP.
RFP.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to award the recommendation for the 2020 dash 59 dedicated fiber WAN F, F, RFP to Zayo LLC.
And just thought I could, one, I've, and Mr. Dodd sits on some of these committees now, but the RFP process and, and what you went through, the, the winning bid was significantly higher than everyone else as far as the way your team rated it, the scoring on it. And I thought that was pretty significant because it didn't just cover one area or one concern, it did the, the entire. So I appreciated that. And then someone who's been quiet on this, but I, I know behind the scenes did a great deal, and that's Mr. Bradshaw. Thank you for your work on, on this, because I know it was a lot. And, and I understand, actually, you all worked really well with Mr. Bradshaw to execute that, so.
Turning out to date and then Boulder was a very short time.
It was a short time.
Very, very good to work with.
So we do appreciate that. Thank you.
And you said, she's in Boulder?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. Pat Deutschman said. If you have any problem, call the former board member.
Mr. Dodd?
I just, because Mr. Kennedy, I, I kind of, I don't know if I heard you right or if you may throw me, throw me a curveball. So you, you know, one of the things I was going to say is, you know, the RFP form didn't have prices, but you just said there was, this bid is significantly higher?
What, I'm sorry, on the points, on the points that we had here.
Okay.
For example, on the ranking, the 90, they came out at 97, the next closest was 74 points.
Okay, so yeah, you were, because we didn't get to see the total cost of the other bids then, did we, on the RFPs? I mean, they, they weren't in here. So just curious, how did those look? I mean, I know this will seem back to yours, that, were they?
Gave them quite a bit more points. I think they ranked the points for the price based on the cheaper the price, the more points they got. That was a factor in the.
Right. I just, I, I like to see the dollars. I like to see the bottom line bid on the form, so.
So for example, one of the other companies that could offer the, the fiber, the least lit fiber, it was significantly higher by millions. So that factored in when we evaluated the pricing.
But I think what Mr. Dodd's asking for, he'd like to see all the pricing.
The ranking and the price.
The rankings. And we have a form that shows that.
Right.
Where it shows, you all use that when you do the bidding, right?
We can show you the second one, would that help? The, the one that came in second? We have a slide for that.
Well, I mean, I am satisfied with what I've been told by staff and everything. I mean, but I'm just, just saying for, for future.
It would be good.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like.
We can get that to you.
I would like to see what form.
If there is a bid sheet where they show all the prices and they can just give those to you.
And, and that brings up a point that I know we are comfortable.
This is not a bid, this is an RFP.
Right, but they still got prices from all the other companies that they could share with them.
But it doesn't necessarily go to the lowest bidder.
And that was what I was just going to say, just for clarification of, of that. We're comfortable with that because I think we understand that process, but while it doesn't necessarily go to the lowest bidder, there are a multitude of factors of what rises those, those points. And that's really what, what I was focused on because those points really do affect. I mean, you could have a low bid but terrible service that could result in high costs to the district. And so that's those factors that we, we do that. And I, I see Mr. Stokes over here, because he knows that as we go through other RFPs where he's like, okay, this may be cheap, but it's going to cost us in the long run.
Can I, example, one that's important for us is a reference. And then also, we want to know if one of their, at least one of their references, we prefer to have a school, a school district, so that we know that they understand the nature of serving a school district. So that's something we.
That's the sound call for the vote.
I'm also trying to get us through my five hundred. All those in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Nelson, for coming and answering questions. We appreciate that very much.
Thanks, Robert.
I'm going to recess the regular hearing. We still have more on the agenda to hear, but we're going to close, or recess this meeting and we're going to open up our special gearing, public hearing, for the purpose of, good option. Public hearing is to receive public comment on the recommended materials for our 2019, 2020, 20 instructional materials, adoption in the area of world languages, computer science, and career in technical education.
Hello.
Hello.
I just come before you because we need to see if there is any public input on the materials we're requesting to adopt.
Any public input? Any public comments? Any public comments? One more time, any public comments?
And then this then rolls over to going on to our agenda then for approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, the public hearing for public comment.
All right, we're going to close it for public comment. We will go back to our, we did a journey of public hearing. And I'm going to reopen the regular meeting for, for streaming.
All right, good afternoon. I come for you today to solicit some board discussion and to seek direction to either award or reject the 2020-24 for single stream recycling. Before we go too far down the road, I'd like to give some historical background about the recycling program we've had here in Citrus County and what leads us here today. Is that okay? We've, we had a contract with Lando Lakes Recycling from 2014 to June of 2019. In that contract, in that bid, we were actually receiving money back as part of the recycling, so there was a financial incentive for us to, to do that. Over the five years, the contract, we received a little over $10,000. In the fifth year of the contract, we were notified that there'd be no refund because the, the market for, essentially the market for recycling had changed and the profitability was not there for the, for the company. The contract ended in 2019. When the contract ended, we were contacted by the company that was providing the services to us, and that they told us that it'd be a little over $1,800 a month if we wanted to continue. By, by virtue of the contract expiring and the cost for services exceeding certain thresholds, we felt we needed to go back out for, for a rebid, okay? And we did that. We went out and rebid. It was advertised in October. We received, received the bids in November. And we're essentially here today just to find out what is, what is the direction of the board, what's the flavor of the board in terms of moving forward. There is a financial increase. When the contract expired with the recycling company back in, in June, midsummer, we had to increase the number of dumpsters to take away trash. So that cost us $18,000 to do that. So we've already incurred $18,000, if you will. When we sent it out for bid, the most responsive bidder came in at a little over $41,000. So having said that, that increase for the, for the board, if we were to recycle, it's going to be approximately $23,000 moving forward. So today, we are, we are faced with, you know, the, I think the conversation should focus around either option A or option B. Do we award the bid? If we award the bid, we know it's going to be in, in total $41,600 for services. Or option B, do we reject the bid and then just continue to incur the costs that we began to incur once the previous contract had expired? So that's where we're at.
What is the county doing right now? Because they have some stuff going on. And I know we, you know, we are not necessarily concurrent with them as far as having to use them, but I know they're, they're talking about universal garbage. They, do, do we know if they're talking about universal recycling at the same time?
It's my understanding they're in exploratory phase right now. I don't know that a hardcore decision's been made, but certainly I would yield to Mr. Stokes a few familiar, or anyone else?
Very accurate, exploring right now the same options.
Yeah.
And Mr. Kennedy, I think in the last meeting, they canceled or they're picking up their container for, for, et cetera.
Is that the last of them too, I think?
But they still have some to fear about.
Oh, they do, okay. I know that they have struggled with not getting recyclable things in their containers and so that's created a.
Now just don't do it anymore.
Yeah, they've.
They put those couches next to the bins. Are we still under the mandate of the state for forced recycling in schools? That was years ago.
Not to my knowledge, ma'am.
Okay, but there was a time where we had to do 80% of our recycling and I, is that expired?
I'm not aware of that being in effect, ma'am. Certainly, we can, we can explore that moving forward, but I'm not aware of that.
The challenge with recycling is that it's, it's, it's costly.
Yes.
I mean, it's not, you know, people, we, I have a friend that, out of state, that owns a landfill. And they, only reason they, they went into recycling was to reduce the amount to try and get longevity out of the landfill, but it actually cost them a fortune to do it.
But now we're, we're taking recyclables that we're putting in these bins and we're putting them in the landfill.
Oh, we, we are, but we're paying a premium to, to not do it.
I want to know what, what is actually done in your recycling system, what is, how is it handled?
We were doing single stream recycling floor, which is basically, they take all the recycled material in one container. But if you've ever gone out and seen recycling, if anybody throws trash that's not recycled in there and contaminates the recycled material, oftentimes that would just end up in the whole floor.
But in the school system, do you think that that's done?
Absolutely.
I know in a school setting, you stand and watch what kids are throwing in.
We can't put a person into every trash recipient. And that's what it would take to keep somebody from throwing trash in a recycling container.
But at least ours are chained up and behind fences after.
Our trash is.
Yeah.
How much does a custodian cost us a year, roughly?
Very roughly, off the top of my head, low points.
Are we going to have to reduce a position in order to potentially have this? I mean, I'm, and that's a concern of mine too, is, is we're adding a cost. It's a good steward situation, but, but does that impact now, you know, the, the budget?
Well, I think, I think certainly in this budgetary climate, I think anything, any dollar spent's going to have to be scrutinized because the numbers are, are difficult at best at this point in time. And I know they're still in session, but I would venture to say that anything we bring on, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to be willing to get rid of.
Exactly. But don't we want to teach recycling as something we should be, we should be doing, but doing it properly? And maybe teaching it properly to be done. I think recycling is very important. And it's not just to say, well, the nitrogen is right, so we're not going to do it at all. It's like you say, well, the nitrogen, the algebra right, it's not do the algebra at all, anything else.
No, that's not what I'm saying. But I'm saying if you think that that's all going to a recycle center, you are misguided.
Oh, I've been out to a recycle center and I know what you're talking about. I've also been in the school system where I thought they did a pretty good job of taking whatever was there and putting it in the right place. I didn't see a bad job being done. Now, I didn't go out to outside and see what happened there, I did not.
Anytime somebody throws food or something into one of those receptors that contaminates the products that are in there, that has to be either somebody's going to clean those products or they're going to just take it to the垃圾桶. And it's a profitable business, it's a full cost business. It's not, they're not doing it, people aren't picking up recycling just out of the goodness of their heart. It's a, it's a profit. If they can't make profit on the product, then they're going to charge us for that.
But I think what we're talking about is, is a, is a service and not necessarily either a curriculum or, or, I mean, when we, when the kids put trash in the trash can, they don't necessarily know what then happens to it. When they put it in the recycling. When they put it in the recycling bin, our assumption is, is well, we're doing a good thing, but in reality, the, the trouble is, is it's still not the process. The process, I agree with. I mean, I, I think, you know, those of us who, when you have scrap metal, when you have, you know, separating your lumber, you know, in construction sites, there's a lot of things that are done that are very convenient, can help offset your costs by doing that. In this case, we're just saying, we're trying, we're, if, if we were reducing the garbage consumption and, and getting that full benefit then into recycling, I think we'd be accomplishing something. But right now, what we're saying is recycle, but it's going to, by the way, you're going to have to pay 15 cents for everything we're going to recycle. It, it's, I'm struggling with the, the cost factor of it, not the, I, I absolutely agree with the, the mission of recycling, but what we've learned over the last decade, it seems like, is that recycling comes at a, at a, a actual cost. And it's difficult for those of us who are, who are managing taxpayer dollars because how do we, you know, how do, where, where does that lie with us? Because that, I, I just worry about that. That's, that's the only thing. I agree with Ms. Powers, the stewardship of it, but it's the cost factor that I'm struggling.
And I think that's what we have to focus on, the cost. And again.
I'd like to see if I could, you know, I've wrestled with this. You know, we teach kids, the boards recycling. We want to reduce waste in landfills, especially those recycling materials, but yet we're not going to add recycling program. I mean, it's kind of, you know, do as I say, not as I do. I wrestle with that because I don't want to have increased costs. You know, I suggested some ideas and, you know, I mean, I think it's a good discussion out here. I mean, what can we do? It's the desire of our school advisory councils. How do they see recycling? I mean, one of mine is teacher said, we'll take a recycling, oh, this right now. Because, you know, right now, we're not recycling. You know, some of the schools have the blue containers out, some of them don't, but none of them are, it's not, we're not in a recycling program right now. So that's kind of tough too, because I don't know if we want to get into that. And, you know, other schools and other districts have environmental clubs, they have students that are stepping up to, you know, be a part of the solution. So I would like for us to come up with a program that we could continue recycling somehow, either a reduced cost or an added buy-in from those who are in the community who feels very strongly about it.
And want to help us.
And want to help.
Yeah.
But as was mentioned, you know, if you have a student, if you have a school-based program with students involved, you'd have to have staff members involved with that.
Who said that would be a candidate in environmental science? They, they came up and they know what they were doing. And that could, like you're talking about, apply to the science program too. They could, could believe us in that.
But we do know according to these cost figures, if we don't recycle, we're going to have to increase our trash disposal program by $18,000.
We've already incurred that, that's the previous contract right now. Okay? We're currently incurring that.
So we're currently incurring that now.
That's right.
Uh, so in reality, it would only be, it would only be about $23,000. I mean, could we get school advisory councils on board? Could we get the education foundation on board? And as I've kind of gone through it, you know, maybe rather than having every school doing something different, maybe we should try to focus on the $23,000 that's going to cost us extra and see if there's support in the community that could help fund that money, where it wouldn't cost to distribute money, but where there would be individuals or groups that would step up to the plate, not as much to do the work, but to come up with the money and come up with the funding for it. I don't know. I mean, that's.
It's a problem for all of us and I just want to see a solution to all of us, be in there working. Make a solution, have a solution, huh? Really like your idea.
I brought up the fact that we don't recycle in the, in the summer. So could we cut two months' worth of these costs? Could we cut two weeks of Christmas, a week of Thanksgiving, a week of spring break? Obviously in talking to staff, well, we have to rebid it, I guess, because.
I'm going to give you a few moments to think about that because it is 5:15 and we have a time to certain for citizens' comments. We're going to move on to citizens' comments. And I have two green cards. Each, each list of speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, or other breaches of respect and refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and commonplace acceptance are construed as insults or tend to incite violence and breach of the peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss or take any official action on any presentation. Any person who is present who wish to speak must fill out a green card, which are located at the back of the chair. And the chair calls the first speaker, Victoria Smith.
Hello. Good evening. Is it me? Yes. Victoria Smith, Citrus County Education Association President, as well as a teacher at Citrus High. Hello to the board, superintendent, chair, assistant superintendent. I'm requesting perhaps, I don't know if it's really a request, but maybe something can be done for, in policy, for students making false accusations against staff members. Right now in the student code of conduct, the acts of disciplinary intervention has inappropriate behavior has if they're making false accusations. But it's right now up to the administration whether or not a child has a discipline. As you know, if someone makes an accusation against a staff member, they have to be pulled out, there's an investigation. Sometimes if DCF is involved, they, and HR of course has to do this, they can be out for months. In that time, then the students, other students also aren't being affected by that because of course, the everyday of classroom is not being attended to. Then when the, when they find out, HR as well as, human resource, sorry for people that don't know, human resource department as well as DCF, that they find, you know, there's nothing to be, there's no accusation whatsoever, it's, it's false, then nothing is being done to the students now. Not everywhere, some principals do discipline the child, but it's not happening everywhere. So it's the discretion of the principal. So my concern is that some students are doing it again and then another student does it. It's just, it's holding, it's letting students know, hey, I can get that teacher or that staff member, that aide out of the classroom if I don't like them. And that's a concern to me. So I'm just hoping maybe the board can look at, maybe writing up, thinking of some policy or something that perhaps maybe can, you know, have something in there to stop this from happening. Because again, we know that we have to investigate, but if it sends a message that if you're going, if it's true, yes, definitely report it. But if it's not, you know, you're disrupting the whole classroom. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Before you have a seat. Thank you. We take a pretty hard stance on that. And if you've got particulars where something has gone, if you could bring up specifics to have, but. A second. Green card is from Mr. George Smalstig.
Good evening, everyone. George Smalstig, founder and CEO of Filter Family Solutions, formerly known as Filter Youth Development. We've recently changed our name to Better, Informed Community, what we are all about. First of all, two things. Mrs. Hemble, the picture of you in the paper with that sign was priceless.
You were surprised.
I came home from a business trip and saw that and I celebrate with you. I really do. I couldn't be more happy. I appreciate all the work that you all do and all the staff. I live with three people who are thriving in the Citrus County school system, my two children and my speech pathologist, Whitey. So it's a great thing when a man can live with people who are thriving. So I want to come and share with you something that's happening right now. It's a really big deal to our very small agency. Representative Mizulo, this session, he introduced House Bill 3923, and that was an appropriation bill for Filter. And so it looks as though that is going to make it through the legislative process and will be included in the budget that's submitted to Governor DeSantis. And so that appropriation is $250,000 for our organization in the next fiscal year. So how that breaks down is $50,000 for operations and $200,000 for a capital project. We have property on Homestead Trail that we've leased off of the Citrus County government. And so now as the attention turns from the legislature towards the governor's office, we need all the support we can get in, in, in writing letters to the governor. And the turnaround time is quick. I will tell you, the last day I have, I've never experienced so much love from, from Citrus County. We've got constitutional officers that are turning around letters like that. And I've been in the juvenile justice system for 22 years, working in government, and I've never seen government move so quickly. And so, Mrs. Hemble, when we started this more than seven years ago, I came to you, I spoke to you, here's what I knew in starting an agency from scratch. Aside from the fact that it would probably be doomed to fail and be very, very difficult, on one of those counts, I was wrong. I knew that I had to have the support of our sheriff because it's a delinquency prevention program. I knew that I had to have the support of our superintendent. And honestly, if I didn't get that support, I really don't even think that I would have started. And we, we gained that support. So I'm back here to ask for your support by way of board support in the form of a letter to Governor DeSantis. Turnaround on this is quick. I would absolutely need this by my closing business tomorrow because these things are going to be hand-delivered to the governor, the office.
Hemble on, on Thursday. We not execute, ask this, the chairperson to execute a letter on our behalf?
I don't know if the school board would like that, to approve funding.
If it's in the, if it's in the budget?
Fifteen years, that's the first time anyone we've asked an eight-hour turnaround, 24-hour, 18-hour turnaround.
But you can approve the program. Even if you could not approve funding, you can approve the program, it works how you like it.
You want to approve programs that are not associated with Citrus County.
I think it too might be more impactful because we, we talked to Mr. Mizulo and Senator Simpson pretty friendly. And I think probably if you want to use your tag as Citrus County school board members, but I think it would be more impactful if, if you did the individual letters in the SEB. I, I think you said the amount of letters rather than who they're coming from.
Well, yeah, I was, I, I don't, I don't know it's going to be most impactful, but yeah, the, the quantity or, or the, the quality, whatever it may be.
But what he's asking you to do is by board action, write a letter approving of his program and, and supporting, funding my election. And I cannot tell you that, and I cannot buy, that's, and I'm sorry, but in 15 years, that's the first person that ever walked up here and asked for that to happen. I can't tell you.
I would love being a trailblazer.
And Ms. Fresh, I respect that. I do agree, I, or I see where you're coming from. That doesn't procure us, that doesn't impede us as individual members to have, to, to decide that we want to at least write a letter as Ms. Hous. So. Yeah, I would, I would have been asked just if, if the chair maybe could direct Filter to go ahead and maybe send each of us an email that just gives us some synopsis of, of kind of that piece of it. I know you mentioned the bill and then.
The bill was 3923, I remember, yeah.
I will have that to you within an hour.
I know you will.
And then, but I, I think, and then I just, you have our support for sure.
I appreciate that.
I still remember years ago, I think at the Lincoln Day Dinner, you were being the man of the year.
The first recipient of the Jeff Green Community Service Board, and that's on my shelf at home, I take pride in that, I appreciate it.
If you would include, if you had it, the emails of the governor and so forth. I have them, but, but not everyone may have them right at their fingertips and that really is helpful to just have that.
Yeah.
So that it gets executed within hours.
Absolutely. I, I have that email already created. I sent out a lot of them yesterday and been getting great response from our local government and constitutionals.
Were you wanting letters printed out and handed to you?
I'll tell you what, I think is the best way to do this, just, just email those letters to me as a PDF and then I'll compile all of those and those will go off to the governor's office as soon as possible.
And then I don't know if it's possible, but we have, we have a lot of info ages that we can reach out to, just to push one of our buttons to all schools or none.
I think we can't do that.
I appreciate your, your willingness.
I'll see the watch and the show.
I appreciate it. Hey, I, I will tell you, as a 22-year veteran of the juvenile justice system, I've been, many times I've been in that situation where I've had parents in front of me that are in crisis and they need a referral. And there's been plenty of times when I've just had to give a referral that I didn't really think, I didn't have confidence it was even going to work. And, and what I think about every day is, is when, when, when school staff or whoever are sending referrals, I want them to be confident that we're going to put our best foot forward and do a great job. And we're doing that. I love to see people confident in us. I appreciate the vote of support from all of you. I'll have an email in an hour.
That's right. Thank you. Any other instances, Thomas, I have no more green cards. Comment, Mr. Bishop? We're going to resume recycling.
Yeah, essentially before, before the war today is, is this, essentially the decision is to either accept or reject the bid. But I know we had talked, we've had some brief conversation about the potential of backing out the summer months, backing out the holiday breaks. The current bid, as, as you see here today, it does have a provision in there that takes into consideration that we don't work, all schools don't work year-round during the winter break or spring break. So there's already a consideration to back that out. So the 41/6 is respective of those times, if that makes any sense.
It's already been taken out, saying it's got it.
It's been, it's been given consideration.
In the bid, it's been given, given consideration.
Okay.
And Johnny, could, could we not, not vote on this, postpone it for next time and have time to go and talk with the people in the county and see what they're doing so we can make some for hardships?
Certainly, I would defer to Ms. Wilson, because my understanding there are timelines or timeframes when she's had to be accepted or rejected.
But you can reject the bid and go out for another bid.
Yes.
You, you have an open bid, so you can't go in to talk to another agency about what they're doing. You would have to reject this bid and then talk to the county. And if you decide not to go with what they're doing, then we would have to put out another bid. So we can't go talk to the county while we have an open bid in the process.
So at this point, we either have to reject this bid, accept this bid, is the bid, is there also where if we were to table this, it would, the bid would run out and then in essence, that's our rejection. But you can't, but you can't have a conversation about it if we table it.
And you can't go out there and try to find a better deal when you have a core bid on the table. So either reject it or accept it.
So, and just so I understand, right now, as of right now, we don't have a recycling program in place, right? So if we.
We ran it.
Ran it. And yet.
It's not to say there aren't groups collecting change and materials, but I'm sure that's happening, but not, not organized enough.
Right.
And I'm assuming that if, without a, a commitment of a school that's doing that, that's following it from the time that they put it in some bid in a, in the school or in a classroom and then ensuring, as Mr. Dog was saying, whether they're taking it home or two, or a staff member is committing to taking it somewhere, it's going to end up in the landfill anyway because the custodian's going to come by, see that and say, well, we have, we can't just leave the recycling items there.
In some cases that happens. In some cases that was happening with our single stream recycling program because it was dealing with contaminated trash and it was more expensive to clean it than it was for the dump. I'll imagine if you're leasing, it's a weak recycling set around, you're going to have a health hazard. It's going to, you're going to end up with all kinds of different problems.
And that's where I think the concern is, is that you, you, I, I agree with the learning process, getting commitment, but, but at this point, we either have a service that's doing it, that we're paying for, or then. or then we separately then have to have a conversation about can schools, how we support schools having individual recycling programs.
When you talk about a recycling program and an education program, how to teach kids how to recycle.
Right. How long is the bid good until this bid expires?
We don't have a bid right now.
If they approve it, how long is it going to expire? It's three, three years, the two, two one-year bills.
Okay, no, no, and I'm sorry. When is this bid no longer?
We have to make a decision tonight. I mean, it's, we had on the board, on the docs that they would be approved tonight. The award is already been posted, so you have to either reject or accept this award.
So you, so you've already awarded the bid?
We have.
Well.
You know, you find the need to give it to your typical bring it.
The intent is to.
Like they're the one, they're awarded that they're the one, but it has to have more approval.
Tonight.
But they build their stuff based upon, you know, you have to submit all your documents by a certain date and it's going to be taken to the board on a certain level. Because they don't want us to have a good bid set for six months.
And just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Not that it would be six months, but you.
And this is where I'm at. We have a budget that we do not have clarity on coming from the state. Approximately how much would this impact if we wanted, we had an aide in a classroom? An aide in a classroom, I think, is, is going to be about.
Give me $23,000?
Right.
A $23,000 difference, rough, rough-up numbers, close to one and a half?
So, I mean, I just have, I have a real hard time with that. I, I want this, but if tonight you're telling me I have to make a decision between a custodian, one and a half aides, I just don't, I just don't think I'm there yet. I want to be there, but I, I mean, maybe we can rebid it and have a conversation about it and go about it. But if tonight we have to make a decision, I can't support it.
I like what Mr., excuse me, Mr. Dodd said about getting it into our community and seeing if there are, if there are clubs and organizations that would like to help us, monetarily or anyhow that they can help us.
Absolutely.
With recycling.
And it should never be a choice, I feel, between having aid and having recycling. Something's wrong back there. So therefore we go to YouTube as a, you must go out to the, get the clubs and make something happen there because we all have those little problems. So we all should put something in for the students.
And I agree, but right now we're looking at that from what, and I think Ms. Wilson's not going to give us great news here in the budget update.
I try to move first the top of the agenda every time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it is the difference of those positions that we're talking about. And, and that's concerning to me tonight to feel like, I don't think we, I have trouble committing to that.
And we've been told the last several meetings that we have to watch every hour. And I appreciate, I recycle personally.
I do too.
But I'll tell you, as I go, I go to recycle bins off Highway 19, I'm there. And as I'm putting my stuff in, I said, well, somebody else throws their garbage in, this is a waste of my time. And I've thought personally, you know, that why am I going through this, you know? But I'm still doing it, but I've got to look at the cost and we've got so many other things. And I'm sorry, but I think the custodian and aid in a classroom is more important than recycling to the length. We already have to think that if the kids want to get involved with the community project or something like that and recycle. We had a teacher at my high school who would load his truck up when we were under construction and anything that was metal, that individually took all of that stuff to recycle all on its own. So I'm saying right now, I just, until we see how this stuff settles with our budget, I just, I can't, I can't afford to spend any more money.
I, I was.
Sorry, Ms. Bryant.
No, I was just. Well, I still think we could come up with a solution that we could still have a recycling program without having to spend this amount of money. And I think there's value to getting input from our school advisory council, our parents and our students as to what they think we should do. You know, so I would like to see us having a recycling program back in place. I just, I think we've come up with some alternative ways of making that happen.
And just as a rough number, I mean, and I know it's not exactly worked this way, but we've got 21 schools, 23 if you want to count all of them. They would have to each kick in $1,000 of their SAC money or contribute something along those lines in order to do it. And that's not to say they wouldn't, by the way.
We have the education foundation. I mean, maybe someone in the community would want to donate to the foundation, the education foundation to allow recycling. But again, for, you know, I remember being a student at Emerson Middle School when they first started recycling newspaper.
Yeah.
You know, and there's always been a focus on the need to recycle. And, you know, sure, the market has gone, gone bad on the raw materials that are recycled. But that doesn't mean it's, it's always going to be that way. So I think that I want us to be cautious. And I know, I know what we're saying is we reject this bid and we, but then we've got to come up with a plan.
Right.
To either rebid it or come up with a solution because we need a solution. The county's solution, they may be getting rid of all of their locations where they're having these recyclables, where they had recyclables, but they're still going to have it at the landfill. I've already felt, they're not closing their recycling center at the landfill. So they're always going to have recycling, it's just that people may have to travel further to take the recycling. What I'm saying is what can we do to still have an impact on recycling with our students? And maybe, maybe right now it's not newspaper, maybe it's the plastics and the aluminum. But what can we focus on that still reinforce what we're teaching? Reinforce the message that it's, that recycling and the environment is important. So that's kind of where I am. But, you know, I, I don't want to have to spend any money on it either. I mean, we made what, $10,000 in the last four years. It wasn't much. The last five years, we made over $10,000. Well, that's, that's. Not much, but.
No, that's, right, yeah. That's, that's a better direction. So. I like that direction.
And it makes sense. We've got a lot of entrepreneurs that just watch the program where these guys are looking at billboards. And they, they were buying billboards made out of this vinyl and they're, they're making little satchel boxes, little duffel bags out and they're, they're billionaires now. So we have to wait for that entrepreneur that's going to come up and get recycling back into our country and find a use for it. The kids, I, I'm sorry, but the kids understand recycling, but they're reading the same news that we're reading, that it's going into our landfill. And so we've got to be really careful on what we're educating them. Do this, but it's not going to matter, or do this and be positive about it. So I think we need to maybe take a step back and see how we can really teach what the condition of recycling is right now. Because right now the kids are going to say, well, yeah, I'm recycling, I'm a really good citizen, but it's going in the landfill anyway.
And I think as, as what's been, I would just echo what's been said here. We need the community's help on this. This isn't something that we believe we've got the solution or the answer on this board. We are asking for help from the community to say, help us figure this out. We, we are constrained by economics to just simply throw money at this solution. We need help to solve this. And I think we can solve it and make our world both a better place and teach our students the stewardship of recycling. With that, I'm going to say though, that I'm going to make a motion that for tonight only, that we reject bid 2020-24 single-streaming recycling. And I would just add to that, that I would ask that both the community and we as a school district and as a board, that we look to try and find a, a lower-cost solution to provide recycling within our schools.
So you're saying to reject the.
Only because tonight we're having to reject, only, only because we have the bid.
But accept the idea.
But I think we accept the idea that we need to do something.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryant to reject the bid 2020-24 single-stream recycling from, from single-stream, right, for waste code. Are those in favor?
I saw the discussion.
One more?
So is there a way we can add an item in there and say, with the understanding that, I don't know, in April or at a workshop, we can.
You're right with me. I was thinking it's.
We can direct that afterwards, but I think we have to reject the bid. Am I not correct? Procedurally, we have to reject the bid.
I think it asks if we can either have, take a look at the agenda or something.
Is then the motion?
No. Is it accepting or rejecting?
Both. But as soon as the bid's over, somebody could, could suggest that the board make correction.
We can put it on the.
It's not part of the motion. It's not part of the minutes.
Any further discussion on the motion? If there are none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
I think that's the saddest aye Mr. Dodd has ever.
It's sad for others.
No, it was. They were all aye.
So, and then, so what do you want, like, look back again in April, Mr. Dodd?
Well, I mean, we've got to have a little time, but is there a way you can get those SAC meetings? I mean, I just finished a lot of mine this last week, so.
We have one more nay is usually, I think, is. Oh, I had one that they scheduled to make. Yeah, not a workshop, SAC.
That, I mean, that needs a face-to-face.
Well, and the SAC committees support clubs, so if each one of the schools had their little environmental recycling club, then the SAC committee can support that. That's an idea.
So here's something too. We could ask if, you know, for the chairs or to get to filter out to the chairs if they would put on their agenda and, you know, each of us would try and be there.
Let's do the presentation to them.
Right, that's what I was going to say. And talk to them about it so that we can get that feedback, try and get that audio.
Now we're going to find out when we can get the bid. Now to the next movement on the agenda, information items. It's cash investment report.
And I assume the investment report was before the last, this last week.
Our, the investment report that you have was for January. And in January, we did receive, it was about $235,000 in interest. And I just got the February numbers. We got about $285,000 in interest in February. And unfortunately, on, let me see what day this was, March 4th, the Fed did reduce the target range by 50 basis points. So we will see our investments go down right now, and this is in response to the coronavirus. And so we're still holding strong. I did receive some CD proposals that were like 50, 45, 50 basis points, where we were looking at 250 a couple of months ago. So it's hitting some of those type investments a lot harder than. Hopefully ours are in more, are in more stable things. Government bonds and governments can only invest in certain things. So we are keeping an eye on it and trying to keep our funds in the most lucrative ones that we have at this time. So January and February generally are most interest-generating times because we have such a nice influx of the tax money. So of course, those are going to be our highest month. But we will definitely see, they're saying, through the end of this fiscal year, a decline in the rates that we're receiving. So.
Can we ever go to, to investors, banks, whatever, and say, I know you're giving us 1.5% and we really want 1.7%?
We're very restricted in what pools we can invest in. We can't just walk up into a bank and say, we need you to give us an investment. That's why we are in pools like Florida Prime and Florida Fit. There's other ones out there, Florida Safe, and they, they all are geared towards the government entities that are regulated by, you know, they're regulated on what we can invest in. So low risk, yeah, so.
Low risk, low reward.
With that, with that said, I wanted to address some of the, I'm trying to find if I have this up. From FSBA, some of the things, Mr. Kennedy's very good about sending us out items. And right now, the House and Senate are battling out, you know, the teacher raises. And just to give you an idea, the Senate had the $600 million we were up to. But with that, they were reducing the BSA to $18.64, I believe. This would give us, if we, you know, discount the fact that we're increasing our FTE, the BSA of $18 would give us about $250,000 more dollars for next year. And, you know, some of our representatives are saying, well, that's going to be enough to cover your FRS. And our FRS is looking about 1.2, so.
1.2?
Million. 1.2 million. And so if the BSA is reduced to $18, we're still having to come up with about a million dollars to meet that FRS mandate. And it doesn't seem that, even though the districts have pleaded with them to make this a gradual increase, they just figure that we will find the money is from what I'm, you know, the articles I've read. And so as I said before, the House and the Senate are the closest that they've ever been in the total funding. And for our district, it was coming down to a difference of about $7,000. I mean, I've never seen it in the years I've done the budget of them being that close. So we pretty much know how much money we're getting. It's just what are they going to make us do with that money? And that's what they're battling out right now. So.
And Ms. Wilson, did you see what happened last night? And it's okay if you didn't, but.
I've read all your articles.
So last night, they, the, they could not come together on that proviso language and to get it into the budget. And basically, it has to do with that the House wants to strictly define what a teacher, classroom teacher is. The Senate has been sticking to a more broader view. This is kind of still, we are back to that main issue. The, the House has already passed this, so they were waiting for the Senate. The Senate needs a two-thirds majority. The Democrats have a, they have enough to nix that. And they made it clear that they, as a caucus, that they would not approve it. So it got, basically, they canceled, they can't pass the budget in its current form. That kind of goes into almost like an impasse or what we think of as an impasse with, you know, in bargaining, what happens. And so now they kick it back up to the chairs to kind of now force the budget to take place, which really now means that we're even more limited as to what that proviso language is going to be or the implementation bill language. And it's, it's really up in the air. So I, I think that, you know, it's, I haven't heard the $18 come back yet. I think it's, it's back closer to the, to the $50, but the, but no one knows in the budget where the FRS is going to land.
Correct.
And so that's really, I mean, that's to me, my, I mean, it's like we get through how they're going to define a teacher, which is concerning of how that's going to be. And then the next piece of that is what they're going to mandate. Will they mandate a type of floor or an expectation of a floor? And one of the biggest issues that came about is that they want, the House wanted that the plans for, or how the spending is done to get approved by DOE. And that was where the Democrats kind of, you know, held the line and said that they were concerned with, with doing that. I, I think that, you know, I can see both sides of this. The problem is we're running out of time and we need a budget pass. And, and I think the other biggest concern is how the virus, which is a new piece of this, how the virus is going to impact the budget because right now they are setting money aside. So there's a lot of moving parts in the last couple of days.
It's kind of, one hour it's this and one hour it's that. So trying to keep up is.
And we appreciate you keeping up.
It's been, it's really, really hard. I have been on the phone texting back and forth with FSBA, trying to, you know, to keep on top of what those changes are and. And honestly, it's been difficult. And I do not envy the legislators because I do believe that they're trying, that their, their hands are tied. And, and right now, they couldn't, they, there was even at one point an effort to try and make a train bill out of kind of a surprising educational little bill, and it added to this bill that was only about 20 pages. It added a 230-page amendment that was then withdrawn. So it, I mean, there's, there's so many vehicles they're trying to get this through. And a lot of it's because, it's a lot of, you know, the session was supposed to end this Friday, and that's not going to happen.
Yes.
They, they won't have the 72-hour cooling-off period to be able to make that happen. So pray for the legislature, and I mean that in good faith.
So I found my little quote that I wanted to, Chair Kelly Stargel did make comments to the press following the Senate's offer that she believed the 18.64 per-weighted full-time equivalent student increase in the BSA would be enough to pay for the FRS contribution. So as we know, it's quite a bit short, so that's where we're at with the legislators. And I know the panels pleaded, and you guys have pleaded, and other districts have pleaded that we need help with that. And once we know where we're at, then we'll be able to come up to you with better numbers and a better budget.
And I think the roughly $73 a student cost of FRS seems to tie with your expectation of what you think FRS would run us.
Yes. Any other questions tonight?
We appreciate what you do.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Attorney, do you go matter? Anything, Mr. Bradshaw? Besides Kenneth Smith, sweet.
The only thing is that we have the workshop, except for...
It's going to be on the Stoneley campus, and you're probably the best person to say we need you is being Mr. Dodd.
It's up to, I mean, I, I think, I feel like it must be in there, I think it'd be a good idea. I mean, I guess we may need to be there, but I don't, it's, that's it. It's a good idea.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We need to approve some minutes, and we got into the habit of maybe lumping them all into one motion.
Let's do that.
You're the best at it.
I'll help you.
Do you make a motion?
I'll find it. Okay? I'll help you.
Thank you.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 28, 2020 administrative hearing, special meeting, and workshop. The minutes of the February 11, 2020 administrative hearing and regular meeting, and the minutes of the February 25 administrative hearing, special meeting, and workshop. Move approval.
Sir.
I have a motion by Mrs. Bryan, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the minutes of the February 11, February 25, and January 28. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion stands five zero. Any other business that needs to come before the boards? We could, citizens' comments at the end of the, oh, at the end of the meeting, yes. Citizens' comments at the end. You have citizens' comments?
No.
Are you a citizen?
Yeah. It's, it's the, just on some of the work reporting.
It's a brief one.
I, I, I love the idea of going to the SAC committees. I say SAC because we all know that, but Student Advisory Council, School Advisory Council. And, and maybe it is something, too, I don't know that you're, when you're meeting with them, assemble, but maybe that's, even if they, even if you can't, maybe if they could assemble the student, the superintendent's council at the schools and the local advisors there, maybe could ask some thoughts about the, that. The, the chrono, chronola, I was going to say, the, the virus seems to really be impacting our day-to-day lives. And a couple of things, one, I just really want to thank the superintendent, the executive team, and the district for the communications and the effort to try and, and help our public and our students understand that we're working on things. I, I, I know seeing something, it may sound like a small thing, but the superintendent I believe shared that we're getting sanitizing, you know, hand sanitizers, but I think that's likely the cost of almost $100,000 in order for us to accomplish that.
And before you go any further, we've had hand sanitizer in our schools, which is trying to increase what we have.
Right.
And, and we're monitoring the soap, paper towels, because everybody's washing their hands a lot.
And that, and that...
What are you glad about?
And I'm so, and I'm so appreciative. So it comes to the second phase of this, because I know, and Mr., thank you, Mr. Bishop, for stepping forward, because you, you know that your team has been on this. My son goes to Florida Institute of Technology in Melbourne. He was informed today that they are not going to have commencement for the public. They are only going to allow the graduates. I am not suggesting this, by the way, but I do think right now that, you know, we unfortunately had to, we did not, but the state canceled the science fair. There are a number of things that have happened in the state that I think that's going to continue. And I just didn't know what provisions overall, not necessarily for graduations at this stage, but, but, you know, can you give us some feedback?
Mr. Bishop, before you speak now, speak.
Definitely. Of course.
Thank you. I've been on four conference calls, two yesterday, two today. They've been from the governor, the Department of Education, Commissioner Portland, put on a couple of them, three of them, all the FAD boards are on there, they're all on there, and then today, also the President's on there. The message today that we received from DOE and Commissioner Portland directly was it's business as usual. What everybody throughout the state is doing is preparing in case something happened, that we had to close schools or something kept struggling. Every Wednesday, in fact, last Wednesday, and tomorrow at 2:30, we meet with our team. We've got Vicky on our team. We have our head nurse on there because she gets, she's on the tour call with the state, the Department of Health. And so we'll stay on that, but some of the recommendations have, like, number one, travel. They are, and Mr. Portland was very clearly beginning to say, this is a recommendation, but then he's very clear at the end to say, you are the superintendent, you are the elected official, you control the, you own the district. So, yeah, yeah, we'll do that. So their recommendation is for out-of-state travel, that we should suspend, and he keeps saying, recommendation only, that we should suspend, suspend out-of-state travel if it's by air. Because he said if you're driving kids across the state line or something like that, it doesn't seem to be as big an impact, because they still stand firm that our kids are low risk. The state, DOE, is working with FLBS, that they're working with getting in servers, that they should be, probably by the end of April, they'll hold everybody by the dates, they should have about 400,000 student capacity at that time for districts to tie into them if they needed to immediately. Most districts in that district, they were not prepared for all these online courses and, and making sure our students could go back to attendance and those supplements. In Arden County, our attendance policy remains the same. If a kid is sick, they, parents send a note in and they will be excused, because some, I think a couple of districts have kind of wavered on their attendance policy, or we're telling parents that we're staying satisfied. So they're on it. Probably why we have another conference call with the state, the over on Friday, if anything was to change, or circumventual, you know, try to figure that they're going out on Friday. Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, I'll give you a real quick overview of some of the things we've done to better prepare ourselves. We know, we've identified just under 1,500 instructional spaces across the school district. We've added, we've ordered 3,500 sanitizer refills. Each of those refills has 1,500 pumps per, per refill. Those will be coming in in the next few days. We'll start seeing those come in, that should come in. We've also added additional dispensers, or actually, dispensers to put in places where either there's not a dispenser or where the dispenser there is not functioning properly. We've also put an order in for the necessary equipment for us to begin a process in our transportation department for postal bus disinfecting. Ms. Farmer and I have met, and once the product comes in, or that comes in within the next few days as well, we're going to have our bus drivers, perhaps staff sanitize the buses with appropriate chemicals after each post truck, so the bus will be cleaned for the next morning. We've increased, we use a product called Santi Bombs. We've increased our stock in that, our inventory in that. We've had, actually, we feel very, very comfortable with the amount of inventory we have of Santi Bombs, so should something happen, we'll be able to respond very quickly and use that product, which is very effective in killing a lot of stuff. Providing extra custodial help to some of our schools, you know, custodians out for, you know, safety reasons or personal reasons, what have you. When the school asks if they can get some extra hours for custodians that are there, we're granting that, so we're ensuring that our schools are, we're maintaining the level of cleanliness that we expect each and every day. We're also working with our vendors to, to ensure that we have future availability of the product. If they want to go buy a product and pitch it to us or sell it, we're not going to be able to get the product moving forward. We've been assured by our vendor that we will be able to get the refill products for those dispensers on a as-needed basis. Some other things you'll see across the district, we, we began a campaign of putting hand-washing posters and signs, signage across our campuses. I know Ms. Blair is working on a, getting a video out to our elementary schools about washing your hands, the proper way of doing that. And one of the more, one of the more labor-intensive things that we're doing is we are going through, we're inventorying our faucets in our bathrooms. A lot of those faucets have the, they're adjustable, and they may run, the water may be cut off automatically after about 10 seconds or so. I've directed staff to go out inventory the sites where those faucets are, and we're coming up with a way to either, A, adjust those faucets or replace that, that fixture. So you can tell that's a, that's a very costly expense, but it's also very labor-intensive, but that's something we're going to do because the CDC does recommend washing your hands for at least 20 seconds, and so we're going to make sure we can...
And when you addressed the hot water, Vicky was on our committee, and she brought that up, the teachers were asking about washing their hands.
Yeah, there's more value in you washing your hands with water. It doesn't have to be hot water, per se, but it's a friction with, while you're rubbing your hands and under a flow of water for about 20 or more seconds. So that's the reason why we're going to make those adjustments to our faucets.
Mr. Bishop, we have a wellness center.
That's great.
Do we, do we know anything yet about kits to determine whether someone has the virus or not at this point? Or is that something that's gone through the health department, that they're coordinating that?
As far as the kit availability, we have not had a conversation. However, we have had a conversation with Florida Blue. Florida Blue's come out for those fully insured, fully insured, although we're self-insured, fully insured patients, their tests are being covered. And so we're working on Florida Blue to see if there's an option for us to get on the self-insured side as well. So those, those conversations are ongoing.
Because I know that we're not there, and let's hope that we never quite get that far, but, so I just, I am so grateful to the district, Mr. Bishop, for, you know, spearheading, because I think we are taking a common sense approach to this, and, and I'm just very proud of where we're going with this. So I think it's just, it'd be helpful, when we do have an opportunity to meet, just to maybe keep us updated on, on this, as, as you guys have been including us in our work.
One other thing they talked about this evening was testing, and as of right now, there are no plans to suspend any testing. Now, that could change in a week or two, but their focus, a lot of kids are on spring break, of course, their fear is now that the kids going on, things going on, purposes of travel, and how they monitor them when they come back. There is no way to monitor where people vacation. So they're just hoping people are honest with their plan.
And, you know, University of Florida, it was announced they were going to scale back and do more online teaching as a result of that, and they were, they were working that direction. Again, I, I don't know that that's where really is necessary to, to go to that step right now, but I, I think that just knowing that we have those options and plans and we're, we're looking at them gives me the comfort I was looking for.
And Mr. Bishop, the only thing I have is with the cost of replacing faucets, but those...
It won't be the entire faucet, it'll be the, it'll be the head of the faucet.
Okay, but that 10 seconds, I think our kids are pretty well trained, you just hit that thing, did it goes another 10 seconds.
Then you recontaminate your hand.
Oh, okay, yeah. But I think y'all will be glad to know that also on our call today, this is one that's seen no decline in hotel bookings or things.
And I can, can tell you my son will be there tomorrow, so looking into contributing to the taxes there. I, I want to lift out to someone who has been truly making an impact in, in an area that we kind of overlooked, but it's going to be very impacting to this district, FASFA. Anybody who's got a kid in, in college knows we annually fill out our FASFA, which is federal, you know, to, to determine what, if any, funding you may get, but it also is used to determine sometimes your costs at a university or college, and it also impacts the dollars that come back, so to give students options. There's been an effort to try and increase that. This, this board with the superintendent's support agreed to have Mr. Bitner, you know, provide that as an agent, and he had actually shared some numbers recently, and I think it's, it's, again, incredible of what's happening. Citrus High School's already had 311 students that had signed up for FASFA so far through March 1st. Crystal River had 314, LaCanto had 377. It's a direct effort of, of that with the superintendent, and, you know, to give you an idea of what those dollars, at the very minimum, some of those dollars, it also impacts their bright futures, because there is a connection between the FASFA figure, Skyward, and, and that application. So you're talking about for a lot of students, that's, there's $21,000, $28,000 right there. But, you know, Mr. Bitner, we, we kind of forget, he also goes around to the schools, and he doesn't just for LaCanto, but he goes to Crystal River and LaCanto and identifies those students that may be national merit eligible. And he works to inform the guidance department to say, hey, by the way, you've got a student here. He doesn't just do it for IB, which we all know what an amazing job he is there, but he does it with the other schools. And, you know, he offers a, a SAT, ACT prep. And then, you know, Golden Citrus, he works with the Golden Citrus staff to make sure that we really have a very equitable and, and great system. But I just had a chance to, to get a report from him at a foundation that he's a part of, and I, I just, I just felt like I needed to lift out his name here. And then lastly, you know, we had expulsions earlier. They're really tough. The public doesn't get to see that work that we do, but I just have to publicly say to my board, I am grateful to serve with you and the superintendent and the executive team, because those are tough decisions we make, and I think this board works very, very hard to be making decisions that can positively impact those that may get fractions, while making sure that students are safe and secure, as Mr. Dodd would say in the classroom. And so I'm just grateful to you. That's it.
Hi.
Well, we have the Stoneman Douglas update on Friday. Appreciate the work of the superintendent and Mr. Moore and Mr. Bishop, all the work and stuff, to getting, getting people there, hear the message in sheriff's office and school resource officers and first responders. So I think we'll have a good turnout, and I appreciate, I encourage Pearson, 1-3, Sheriff Polteri, as the chair of the North Stoneman Douglas Commission, will be there. And so it's just another part of how we continue to focus on safety, right? It's been over two years since this has happened, but there's still a lot to learn, a lot that we can maybe apply some things here. So I'm glad that we're going to do that and do that together. We have a safety and security meeting on Thursday. So I didn't know if there's anything you had to bring up, you did talk about, and good company. But with the last meeting, it did make some, there's something that happened, and we're so true with that. But I don't know if there's anything specifically for this meeting. But the May for the Trades Dinner is Friday with Peachtree Technical College, they have a trade dinner, it's Friday, 6 o'clock, at the county auditorium. And then, I know you all lived, you know, the disaster mission trip was fun, and the last guy associations, and my base, it does a great job at that, I believe. That's all I have.
I was going to answer a question about May for the Trades, and you answered it for me. How much is that, who do you give the money to?
Florida here on it.
Oh, good.
If you buy it, if you buy it from WTC, you don't have to pay a fee, but Eventbrite has a way to, you can order it online, but there's a fee involved. But the, here's the prices.
But the, here's the prices.
I mean, it's time for one meal, not all that gold and silver and stuff. It was gracious, I might need that money.
I mentioned the sponsor for you. I think it's, I think, I think it's, isn't it $50 to Sam or Peter? I think it's $50 a ticket.
Thank you.
You can pay for it.
This actually has, if you wanted to be a platinum sponsor, you'd get eight tickets.
Not that I do.
No, but you know what, next year, I can't be there because I'm going to swim meet that night. But maybe next year as a board, we could become sponsor. And then we just get all of our tickets. That'd be pretty good.
That's true.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Now, just mentioning tonight, the art show over at the Central Board College.
We're heading there.
Ends on high schools, art students will be shown and do a little presentation. I'll report, and then it's just a beautiful visual art. Oh, was it, article I read that said those people involved in the arts, visual arts, dancing, whatever, a form of art you're involved in, that they, 31%, they don't die, 31% don't die if they continue to earn that. I know it's been forever, it's not going to be eternal, but as compared with the other people. That's right.
I had a SAC meeting in La Canto Middle last night, and they're starting. So again, I think that's a good idea to maybe include them in SAC meetings. They all have a little bit of money. And they all have good organizations. So that's something that we can all investigate. Then I have something on my agenda, Friday at 11:30. I'm going to be back to join our superintendent, who's going to be speaking at the Chamber of Commerce. We'll be there, we're all going to be there. Citrus feels. So again, just, we're working just about as fast as we can. You double booked it a couple of times, but we got about 17 minutes to get to La Canto High. Or no, is it?
First season.
No. No, it's at CF, isn't it?
CF.
CF, yeah. CF. This presentation starts at 6:30.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said about Friday.
No, Friday, tonight. So is there anything else, more? All right, there's no other business to come before the board. This meeting stays adjourned.